Everyone, I'd ask that you would please rise as we welcome Pastor Dale Hexum of Good Shepherd Church to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear my Father, we gather tonight and give you praise and thanks for your goodness and your faithfulness. Thank you for the ways you have blessed this community, and we pray for your continued blessing upon its people, its schools, its businesses, its churches, its organizations, its government, and its leaders. We pray specifically for our mayor and our city council this evening. Pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions and as they seek to improve the way of life in this community. Lord, we pray that each decision that is made would be for the greater good and for your greater glory. Finally, Lord, we thank you for this special time of year as we celebrate the birth of our Savior. We pray that we, as a community, would be generous to those in need and full of grace and comfort for those who are grieving. We again thank you for your faithfulness and pray your blessing upon this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, December 16th, 2024. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the open forum portion of the meeting. At this point of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak to the council? To any item that's not on the agenda is welcome to do so at this time. Please step to the lectern and state your name for the record.
Lori Mullin, 2840 Lakewood Drive. And I am here tonight to tell all the city staff thanks for their recent participation in Over the River. It was, I think we were barely able to pull that off this year, but thank Guy for the barricades and even running around finding electrical cords for all of us at the end. Clara and Jean, the police department and their traffic control. We much enjoyed the fireworks. And of course, we had our own local pilot that went to the North Pole to pick up Santa. And our local fire truck delivered him to downtown Sloughley. And I also wanted to recognize Rolando with a visit to Fergus Falls. He did a terrific job in advertising the Over the River. And it's little girls like this with the sparkly shoes on tonight. That's one of the reasons we do Over the River. You know, the businesses had a good day, but it's so much fun to see the kids come and see Santa Claus and enjoy the day. So, thanks, everyone, for their help.
Thanks, Lori. Yeah, thank you to everyone who made that another successful event here in Fergus Falls. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Seeing no one, we will move along to the normal part of the agenda. And the approval of agenda, I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. But I think I will suggest that we move the badge ceremony. I think a lot of you here this evening are here for the badge ceremony. And I would recommend that we move that to the top of the agenda. But I'll call on Andrew Brumseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor members. Just a couple minor changes this evening. On consent agenda item number four pertaining to the transportation agreement, we actually learned that last year at this time, we had the council approve a five-year agreement. So, we're actually good until the end of 2028. So, we don't have to take action on that this evening. And then council member Mortensen requested that item number nine be pulled off for a brief discussion.
The other thing would be is if we can move F3, the developer's request, to H under All Business? As we talked about that at the last meeting.
It's a new request. Technically, it's a different request, so.
Is it the same owner?
It's a different agreement. It's a different LLC.
Then I think it's still All Business, unless it's a new entity that's buying it. Is it a new entity? Somebody different than the people before?
From what I understand, it's a different LLC with a different contract and a different legal entity.
What we know is it's a new LLC. And yes, there's certainly some of the same developers. I can't say if it's all the same developers or not, but we know it's a new LLC.
Then I think we should find that out. I think that's not very transparent, and we keep talking about transparency.
They're here tonight.
So, they'll be here tonight, and it's under ordinance and resolutions. So, we would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented with item nine from the consent agenda removed and item four removed as well. Thank you, Jim. Someone like to second that?
I'll second your answer.
Thank you. Tom, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. So now we will move to the badge ceremony. We'll ask the officers to come forward. But first, we will call on the chief, Ryan Muckell of the Fire Department to lead us in this ceremony.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and also thanks for moving us up on the agenda. The squawks in here is just the sound of our Fire Department growing, and it is obviously a very exciting time for us. Anytime we have people that are willing to put their right hand up and serve the community in the capacity of a paid-on-call firefighter, it's fun. And it's my honor to be in front of you tonight to introduce you to four of our new members, who through the oath will be receiving their badge. I know it's a packed agenda, and you're squeezing us in and allowing us to do this. And I talked about this back in September of getting this on the docket, and here we are. So, a few notes about our badge pinning ceremony. It truly is a milestone. It's a milestone for our members that illustrates the accomplishments that they have completed as a paid-on-call firefighter. All four of these members came on board on December 11th of last year. One had significant fire training, so he was fortunate. We're an in-house academy got him up to speed, but the other three have put in a lot of hours in regards to training and getting them to their certifications, which they continue currently. So, it really is a neat thing to have and a good show of dedication to these members that are coming upon us. All of the firefighters within our community, we all strive for excellence. They're committed to learning. We try to be good stewards of the trust that the public places in us. We work as a team, and we're all proud to be a part of that team and part of the greater good of the city of Fergus Falls. And I am very confident that these four members tonight that are receiving their badge will do just that. The badge our firefighters receive this evening, it's a symbol of the sacrifice that they make to protect the community, both the lives and the property. But it's also a symbol of the brother and sisterhood of the fire service, that we are supportive of one another. So, our four members, so on behalf of our members and myself, I thank you to Castranzi, Ben, Tony, and Noah, and along with their family and their friends, as we see in the audience tonight, for their support and their continued dedication to our organization and the residents of our community. So, at this time, I'll call up our four new members. And they'll line up over here. And then, Mr. Mayor, if you would be willing to come and do the oath of office for them. We have Castranzi Fracano. He'll be receiving badge number 21, and he is employed with Lake Region Healthcare. And also a note with Castranzi is on top of being a paid-on-call firefighter, he has taken on a role as our medical director and has revamped our entire medical protocol. So, he maybe didn't have the training that the other ones have had to do, but he has had a busy year getting us up to speed on our medical protocols. We have Ben Mulstry. Stage left, stage right. He'll be receiving badge number nine, and he's employed with Northwestern Bank. Tony Bernal be badge number 33, and he is employed with Microsoft. And then Noah Goots, which is a second-generation firefighter for us. He'll be receiving badge number 38, and his employer is Cars Tree Service. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you do the oath of office for our firefighters. All right, with that, if those that are pinning the badge on their firefighter, if you would come forward and you are welcome to pin the badge. Ben was very fearful that he was the one that was going to get poked. I was waiting. I'm like, boy, firefighters are supportive of one another. But yet, but we also kind of have a code where we let each other struggle a little bit, too. All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, that is our newest four new members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. Congratulations to all the officers, and thanks for all you do for our community. All right, we will move along to the public hearings portion of the agenda. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first is a public hearing for the unmanned aerial vehicle policy. And we'll call on our Fire Department to lead us in the.
Well, thank you for having the Fire Department come before the Police Department. We're used to that.
I apologize. I apologize.
Andy Miller, Fergus Falls Police Department. Here to talk about the resolution to adopt the unmanned aerial vehicle policy. Honorable Mayor and esteemed council, it's my pleasure to introduce you to our aerial vehicle. So, here it is. I thought it important to kind of show you what it looks like. It's pretty light. I want to underline what we most likely be using this as a tool to locate lost or stolen, sorry, lost or missing children, or lost or missing adults, or accident reconstruction, those kind of things. So, let me put this back down. Also in the room is Detective Estep. He's a pilot for our Police Department. We'll have probably three other pilots. I have had opportunity to speak to several councilmen, members, and citizens about their input, and I thank them for that. One thing that we will do is, when feasible, we'll try to notify the community when we're going to be using the drone. We'll put that on our Facebook page. We have marked it, as you can see, with Property of Fergus Falls on it, City of Fergus Falls. So, with that, I would open it up to input or questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant Miller. And at this point, I'll open the public hearing.
Sure.
And then we'll bring it back to the council. So, at this point, we will open the public hearing, which is required before we pass this resolution adopting the unmanned aerial vehicle policy. This time, anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Step to the lectern, yes.
Mike Streeter, 814 South Oak Street. Could you please explain to us the difference between invasion of privacy and use of the vehicle?
So, thank you for your question, Mr. Streeter. I'll explain invasion of privacy. That is not our intention to use this tool to invade privacy. However, I will say there may be an occasion where we would need to apply for a search warrant if we were to do that. You know, I would say most of the times, we'd be using this over a public area, again, to locate lost or missing children or accident reconstruction, which would be on the street. Invasion of privacy, again, would necessitate a search warrant unless there's exigent circumstances, an emergency-type situation. Did I answer your question, sir?
Yes, you did, but I'd also like you to explain to them that if you fly that drone over public property and you find something or you're flying something in, like in my property, and I've got, we'll say marijuana, thrown in my backyard, would you still have to go get a search warrant? And would you explain the process and like we talked about? And it's no different than if you got a search warrant going to a house? And could you explain that to us?
Absolutely, yes. To expound a little bit, like Mr. Streeter was talking about, if we did have a search warrant and we were over somebody's property and we located evidence of another crime, then we would then get another search warrant. That's the process. Again, we're not looking to invade people's privacy. However, if we do locate other crimes, the correct process would get an additional search warrant.
Thanks, Lieutenant Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm a law enforcement advocate. I appreciate this technology and the city moving forward with it. I think we need to put police back on the higher grounds. I don't think they're out there. And I respect your position between, you know, privacy and search. But let's put our law enforcement, our military back on the top. Let's support them. If your daughter was gone and they were searching for her, I don't think you'd have a problem with this drone flying around. Likewise, an accident, lost man that maybe walked away from the VA. We don't know. I congratulate them on this acquisition. I appreciate the pilots. Carry on.
Thanks, Mr. Leighton. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. It's back to the council. We will look for a resolution approving the, adopting the unmanned aerial vehicular or vehicle policy. Would you like to offer that? Thank you, Anthony.
Second.
Al, thank you.
I have one question. Does that, Andy, does that have like infrared on that or not?
Yes, sir.
Capabilities?
Yes, yes. It has the ability to project voice, too, if we needed to.
Oh, okay.
But yes, very good question. It does have a thermal element to it.
Your Honor, I just have one more question for Lieutenant Miller. What's the range on that particular one that you have right there for distance? How far can it go out?
So, I'm going to defer that question to our pilot.
So, for the range on that one, it really depends on where you're at, what's going to be between you and the drone. Per the requirements to fly it, the drone needs to be in line of sight at all times when you're flying it. So, really, the range, I don't want to give you an incorrect number because it's always, it's going to be in sight while we're flying it. So, that could be a couple hundred yards. It could be three nautical miles is what the FAA says for flight distance, so.
Yeah, so it doesn't get too far away. A question would be then, are you allowed to fly it like from a vehicle? Or you have to be in a stationary position to fly it?
Stationary position.
Okay.
Anthony?
We had an issue kind of at the plant earlier this year where somebody was flying a drone over our property. And I talked to the county sheriff, and basically, they said that there's nothing they could do about that. And then I was referred to the FAA. And, you know, they basically really weren't that helpful either. And, you know, in the end, we ended up having to put signs up that said, you know, this is trespassing if you fly a drone over. So, you know, how does a citizen, if you, you know, if you really don't want this? I mean, is there any position that a citizen can have on any of this? Or is it, would it be the same protocol that, you know, you can? I mean, not just on your drone, but on any drone in the city?
Yeah, I've done a little research on the top you're talking about. It's kind of, it's an unwritten land right now, if you will. There's not a lot of law out there for hobby drones, if you will. I know the research I have is you revert to the FAA to regulate that. One thing I think the city has done is put a link on the airport, the airport website, which I really like. So, in your case, by the plant, they would have had to get authorization being so close to an airport. So, we could check into something like that to see if they're illegally flying on our level. But yeah, that's kind of the process is refer you to the FAA. If there's something nefarious going on, then I guess a law enforcement agency could look into it. And like I said, if it's by an airport, we're going to want to know, and we're going to want to check to see if they contacted our local airport.
It's just that, you know, when I talked to the FAA, I mean, it wasn't helpful at all.
No, I, yeah.
We wanted to shoot it down, and they said that we couldn't do that.
Yeah, probably don't do that. You know, some cities do have an ordinance. Ours does not. Again, we refer to education. And being anywhere in the city of Fergus Falls, you're close enough to the airport where you have to, as a hobby drone operator, file with the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution on the floor adopting the unmanned aerial vehicle policy. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Second public hearing this evening is for a housing tax rebate for a property located at 213 Two Rivers Road. And we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a request that was initially submitted to the city over the summer, but the valuation of the home was above the cutoff for the program that the city is running. So, they initially submitted it at $500,000. Our cutoff is $400,000. However, building started and a new valuation was presented. So, the homeowners have requested that the ask be back in front of the council to see if you would be willing to extend the tax rebate program to them based on the new valuation, which is $400,000, so fits within our program guidelines. The county did accept their application initially, so they are part of the county program. Now, the request is to add them to the city program as well. The home is almost done being built. Our building department says that they are going to be doing a final inspection this week. So, the home is almost done. Will be on the tax rolls. It will be a single-family home at $400,000. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Clara. At this time, I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the housing tax rebate located at, for the property located at 213 Two Rivers Road, please step to lectern at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. It's back to the council. We will look for a resolution approving that property tax rebate.
I'll over that.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Discussion?
I have a question. How did they get it from $500,000 down to $400,000?
The building costs came in lower than they had initially anticipated. So, the way that the timing of the program works is that they're supposed to apply and be approved for the tax rebate before they start building. And so, in this case, the timeline just didn't add up to the right numbers right up front. So, they went high, and in fact, it came in lower.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Under a wording of bids, tonight, we will look for a resolution approving the sidewalk snow removal contract with Atlas Outdoor Services. And we'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I presented on Wednesday morning, just seeking a resolution to name Atlas Outdoor Services as an authorized contractor for sidewalk snow removal for sidewalks that the property owner is responsible for if they fail to comply with city ordinance. So, the ordinance requires that snow be removed from a sidewalk by a private property owner within 24 hours. If that's not done, we receive a complaint. We'll verify the complaint and send out the letter. If the property owner does not comply, we will then, at that point, ask Atlas Outdoor Services to take care of the snow. And then Atlas will bill us. The bill will be presented to you in a resolution. And then we will then bill out to the property owner. So, it's passed through billing for us. If the property owner does not pay, then it will be certified to the property taxes within that year. So, there is no cost really to the city for this. So, we're just seeking. So there is no cost really to the city for this, so we're just seeking a resolution authorizing Atlas for a two-year contract period through winter of 2026.
Thank you, Guy. And we could do that with a resolution?
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Guy?
Guy, these are the same people that also do the lawn mowing in the summer, correct?
Yes, they've been our contractor for the, this last season, yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Guy, is this just residential or is it commercial as well?
It's either or, yes. Any sidewalk that is not maintained, Atlas could be doing any of it.
Questions for Guy? Roll call, please.
Freymer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes. That resolution is approved. We've already completed the badge ceremony and swearing in of the new firefighters who will move to item number two under petitions and communications, which is a resolution accepting and acknowledging the retirement and 34 years of service from Penny Davis. Whereas Penny has submitted her intent to retire effective December 31st, 2024, and whereas Penny was hired as a secretary bookkeeper for the Fergus Falls Port Authority on August 20th, 1990, whereas she became the executive secretary of the Port Authority in April 10th, 1996, and became the Port Authority office manager on March 1st, 2009. Whereas on April 30th, 2012, Penny became the payroll officer for the city of Fergus Falls and her title turned into HR generalist payroll on July 13th, 2022, a role she has continued in until the present time. Whereas Penny's commitment to excellence in payroll and human resources, attention to detail and unwavering professionalism, whether it was navigating complex payroll systems or ensuring that each employer's, employees' needs were met, she has consistently gone above and beyond and we thank her for her hard work, her dedication and the invaluable role she has played in the success of our organization. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls to accept the resignation of Penny Davis and thank her for her 34 years of dedicated service as an employee to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and forward and resolution was offered at a regular city council meeting by council member Jim Fish, seconded by council member, come on, it's my last meeting, Tom Ruffer. And it was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Freymer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
That resolution is approved. Penny's not here this evening, but we do thank her for her dedication to the city of Fergus Falls. Next item on the agenda, we have an award from the American Public Works Association Minnesota chapter and I believe Kent Exner?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Welcome.
It is indeed so.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. A pleasure to be here this evening to present this award. Like the mayor said, my name's Kent Exner, I'm with Apex Engineering Group, we're consulting for my reports there at St. Cloud Office, but more importantly, I'm here representing APWA, American Public Works Association, our Minnesota chapter. I'm currently the outstate director on our board of directors. Yeah, like I said, it's my pleasure to be here. I just want to share a little bit about APWA. I know you've got a lengthy council agenda this evening and I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time. Currently, APWA Minnesota chapter, our membership is just over 1,000 members across the state, so we're very proud of that. Those individuals, that membership is made up of individuals obviously from public agencies like the city, counties, township, state entities, along with folks on the private side of the industry, consulting engineers like myself, equipment vendors, manufacturers, vendors, different vendors of technology and services of all sorts of different sorts. We really take pride of it as an organization providing value to our membership and we do that on a multitude of fronts. First and foremost, our training and educational programs and opportunities and classes are, we believe in the industry, are, are top notch and, and second to none. They're constantly provided and maintained and updated, you know, really to educate and enlighten our membership and really give them some tools to, to craft their career development over time. And then secondly, the other thing that really allows our membership to, to be involved and grow is the multitude of committees we have. We have, we have almost 20 standing committees within our organization and any given committee there might be up to five to 30 individuals. So that really gives our, our membership the ability, you know, to invest their, their time, their energy, their skills, their resources into the, the overarching better cause of public works. So with that, that's my APWA spiel, most importantly. Yeah, I, I don't want to, yeah, short sell this or I've been involved in, in APWA for, for over 20 years and receiving an award from, from APWA is a big deal. I've been on the awards committee, it's 12 longstanding professionals. The, the bar is set very high, the criteria is very specific and prescribed to be considered for an award. So with that, it is my honor to present the city of Fergus Falls, the 2024 Public Works Project of the Year Outstate category, and I should say there's four categories I forgot to mention, Outstate, Transportation, Environmental and Structures. So with that, congratulations. (applause)
As you can imagine, this award's pretty well designed. Thank you, thank you.
And your honor, I believe, Brian gets a shout out for that award, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, and Grant from Bolden Mankor also.
John.
And John, yeah. I'm not, I'm not remembering anyone's names, so.
Great job.
Never will forget a what's his name.
Yeah, so to, Brian, all you and all your team, to Grant, John, all of your team, thanks so much, this is a well deserved honor, he's something we should, we're all at the city very proud of. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight, Kent, as well. Thank you. Did you want to say anything? No?
Kind of look like they do.
Brian probably did.
All right. We'll move along to the consent agenda. I believe there are nine items remaining, we'll remove item nine, which makes it eight items because we will remove item four entirely. So there's eight items remaining. If anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually, we can do that or we will look for a resolution to approve the consent agenda, those eight items.
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks, thanks Scott. Roll call, please.
Freymer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number nine is a resolution approving the 2025 lobbyist contract with Joel Carlson. I believe council member Mortensen had a question?
Yeah, thank you, your honor, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to get my, my feet on the ground, how we work with this individual. It noted in the packet that there was like a $43,000 cost to him and then all of a sudden we went to a $20,000 cost because of our budget. I need some clarification how that works, if he's a set fee, goes with what we want and then I need clarification of who kind of decides if we continue with him every year? Is it the mayor, the council, city administrator? I just want a little insight to this. It looks like he's done a great job for 20 years, I'm not questioning that. I just, I question where you go from 43 to 20,000.
Yeah, you bet. I, go ahead. This is discussed at the tax levy, I'll let Andrew kick off this discussion or just, he's the one who had the conversation with him, so go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, Councilman Mortensen, good question. We have a very good relationship with Mr. Carlson and, and to be frank, I called him up and I said, tax levy committee's working through a tough budget cycle, we're looking to make cuts, can you take, take one for the team this year? And without hesitation, he said absolutely, we have a longstanding partnership. We've paid him just over $43,000 a year for the last four years, we've done two-year contracts. The contract in front of you is just for a year because of that reduced amount. I did talk to him about 2026, he said we can address that a year from now if we're interested in continuing that partnership. That potentially could be at a reduced fee or it could go back to the regular fee. He determines his fee based on workload, so for the last several years, we've had pretty major legislative lifts, whether it be bonding requests, sales tax requests, things that require significant time and attention and the fee is reflective of that. So 2025 legislative session, based on the expected or the known comp, composition of the upcoming session, it's not expected there's going to be a lot of major policy and or bonding bills or things of that type. And I don't anticipate the city of Fergus Falls having any significant request, so that's part of the reason why it's a fairly easy conversation to have with him, you know, saying he's going to represent us at the Capitol, he's going to, he's kind of the watchdog, anything that might impact the city, he lets us know right away. He represents us with state agencies throughout the year, he provides counsel and staff any updates or things along those lines. So he still will be putting in significant time for the city, just not dedicated on a specific project like we've seen over the last couple of years.
When we look at him, do we look at him as like a salary 20,000 is where it's at or does he give you kind of a printout quarterly of what he's done and the hours he has or how does it kind of work?
It's a, it's a salary. The way we've structured it in the past is we pay a fee monthly and then we pay a lump sum in, I think it's April or May, April. What we're looking at in this particular contract is it would be a $20,000 lump sum in that April timeframe.
Any other questions? Would someone like to offer a resolution that we approve that contract with Joel Carlson?
I'll second it, your honor.
2025? Thank you, Jim, thank you, Mike.
I would, I would add the comment that I spent a day with Joel in St. Paul and it's, it's almost like there's not a legislator that the guy doesn't know. So, I mean, he's well connected with, and not just obviously the legislators themselves but a lot of this, a lot of their staff and a lot of staff at agencies. I mean, he's been doing it for a long time, so he is a well-rounded person.
Thanks, Ian.
I think just another thing, quick thing, he's going to be retiring, you know, he's 62, I think he is, so it's, we're going to have to start looking for somebody probably in the near future to replace him if he decides to retire, so.
Thank you, Scott. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Freymer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions, item number one is a land sale at 702 Tower Road South and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseff.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. At our last city council meeting, we introduced the potential sale at 702 South Tower Road in accordance with the city charter. As I mentioned, then, our city charter requires that if we're selling property that's city-owned, we have to do so at two separate meetings with a period of time that elapses in between. The purpose of that process is that it makes the public aware that there's an opportunity to purchase this property or the city's considering selling and they can object or express interest. And I guess for the first time since I've been around, we've seen just that. We did receive a second letter of intent late last week from Key Property Investments to, or that has shown interest in purchasing that property as well. Within your packet is both the purchase agreement based on the first letter of intent that we received from the Chappits, which is a purchase price of $19,500. As we mentioned at the last meeting, the buyers agreed that they would cover the costs of closing. They also included a settlement sheet, what shows that the city would be receiving the entirety of the $19,500 purchase price as they have taken on all other fees. As we mentioned, the Chappits live next door to this property, they have over time helped maintain it but have suggested that they could take that responsibility on, which would remove that from the city's property assets that have to be maintained. Then the letter of intent that was received, I guess it says December 11th, from Key Property Investments, Andrew Yegi is the individual who signed on behalf of that LLC suggesting that he is interested in the property. He has proposed a purchase price of $19,500. He's proposing that the buyer and seller split the cost of closing, specifically the seller, the city's responsibilities would be the state deed text, preparation of warranty deed, other transfer documents and then recording of any releases or satisfactions necessary to provide clear title. He indicated in his letter of intent that he intends to build a new single family home on the parcel and would request as part of his letter of intent that the property be eligible for the big build tax credit from the city and the county. One last thing to mention, he, he mentions that this purchase would be contingent on a brief review with the city building and engineering officials to verify utility connections, easements and overall buildable footprint. So as a council with those two competing letters of intent before you, you have to decide how we proceed from here, whether that be to select one of the two, negotiate further with one of the two, decide not to sell the property. You guys hold the, the power of what happens next.
I'd put a resolution on the table so we can discuss it, that we sell the property to the Chappits, as they were the, kind of the initial inquiry.
Second. So there's a resolution to accept, enter into the purchase agreement that was originally presented?
Correct.
It's in the packet?
And I could add to that, obviously, is that obviously they, they were the initial people, they do live next door to the property and the property has got some contour building issues, you know, that area as, as a covenant, which means that it's going to be restrictive of, of what type of property could be on that. And I, I think it's, you know, I appreciate, you know, Andrew's inquiry at this stage, but I think, you know, it's, it's, all, all comes down to kind of fairness and I think it's, it's fair that, you know, we were approached and, you know, there's other lots that we can sell Andrew to build a house on.
I would just like to comment too, I think the city and the people offering the payment of 19, five plus the closing costs acted all in good faith. And as we had that little negotiation, that meeting, they stepped up and they did the right thing for their community, so I'm in full support of them getting it.
Yeah, Mr. Mortensen.
Your honor, I appreciate the time, I would agree. We, we, they came to us, we came back to them, they came back again and I would suggest that we go with what Anthony said for the Chappits on this one for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? There's a resolution to approve the original purchase agreement with the Chappits? Roll call, please.
Freymer.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Farming.
Yes.
Cooper. I'm going to abstain, your honor.
All right.
Final answer.
That resolution is approved. Next item is a continuation of the discussion of the 2025 budget and levy and we will call on our business director, Bill Sonmore. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, thank you, your honor, council. Before you tonight, we have a continuation, just like the mayor was saying, of our 2025 budget presentation. I am not going to go through that entire presentation again for you tonight. I have just a few slides with some of the changes since we were last together discussing this on the second. So our timeline again, let's look right where we're at today. We won't, you know where we've been, so we held the public meeting on December 2nd, that's according to the truth and taxation statutes. We're continuing that tonight and then I'm hoping that you'll approve the budget levy tonight because we need to have a final levy certified to Otter Tail County by the end of the month. So that is state statute that we get that to the county by the 30th. So jumping right to what changed from the last time we were together? We had told you that insurance rates were going down and we had found out right before we sent the packet out, I think, like maybe- we sent the packet out, I think, like maybe an hour before the packet was going out to you, um, prior to the December 2nd meeting. But we needed to dig in that a little further to make sure, um, you know, how it affected each fund of the city. So we needed some time, because I actually had to adjust just about every fund within the budget for that. But it's good news, because insurance is going down. Uh, workers' compensation, our first bullet point here, going down 37%. So that is a, a huge savings for the city from '24 to '25. Now, across the board, for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, rates are going down about 20%. So why does Fergus even do better than that on that? Our, um, Mike, what's the term?
Mod factor.
Modific- mod factor, um, went from a 1.23, so we were paying 23% higher than the standard premium for 2024, because of history we have had. We have, do they look at three or four years of history?
Four years.
Four years. We now have a year dropping off that we had a lot of claims. And of course, those claims related during COVID, um, and things that were determined to fall under workers' comp at that time. So we were at 1.23, now we're at .96. So now, it's 9.6, right? Or is it 9.4?
9.6.
9.6. So now we're 4% under the standard premium. So there, we have that, um, good swing. So, super good news for us. That reduced, across the city, $213,846. And yes, it's not a round figure, because I adjusted everything exactly, because I needed it to follow through. So some budgets got changed two bucks, others got, you know, 20, 20-some thousand. Property and liability is also going down, and, um, I believe at the league, they're looking at those going down maybe around 8%. We had an 8% increase put in for property and liability. The tax levy committee, we're looking at keeping that at zero. So we're not going up, but we're not dropping it either, because we are adding property onto the insurance as well. For instance, um, the project across the river that just received the award, well, that is going our, on our insurance, so of course we'll pay premiums on that. So across the board, we kept it at a zero change, and that was able to reduce 28,561. So when we, we look at that between levy funds and enterprise funds, um, so again, the levy funds being your general fund, the public library, the port authority, we looked at, um, what are we gonna change there? So the tax levy committee recommends to you that we decrease that levy $70,000, and then we also move $100,000 of those levy fund savings over into the fire department towards the fire truck, as we look towards replacing that ladder truck in the coming years. We know inflation, we talked about that, is 8% a year, I believe, about. So the more money we can put down, the better, and we pay less interest over the life. So that was the rationale for moving 100,000 into the fire department budget. And then, um, we were receiving a grant for some training that we're no longer gonna do, so we dropped both the revenue and the expense side for that grant of, um, just over 12,000, and then a net savings of 700 on that one. So that's the basics of the changes. We just changed the little bubble chart here, so you could see workers' comp going down 37% and property and liability at zero, instead of having an 8% increase. So budget highlights, wanted to show you where we've been. We started in September. This is what came out on the property tax statement at 9.75%. December 2nd, we presented to you a levy of 8,620,000, which would be a 5.81. Tonight, the tax levy committee is recommending to you the changes we just talked about, which brings the levy to 8,550,000. That would be in the resolution that we would be asking for your approval tonight, and that's a 4.95% increase. So just wanted to show you, over this whole process from September until tonight, where we have been. This just summarizes that snapshot as well. Again, we want to be clear about that levy amount for 2025. It's a 403,000 dollar increase, or 4.95, and then the estimated tax rate would be 57.812, and that net effect of that would be about 5.48. It's a little bit higher than what we're actually going up on the levy, because we are, um, seeing the decrease in the value of the Hoot Lake Power Plant that is no longer there. And then, we built back in the aid we're receiving from the state. We talked about that at the last hearing, 259,000. We'll receive that over 20 years. It will, um, decrease 5% each year, but worked with the Department of Revenue, looks like 259,000 is what we should expect for that. So that's why the slight difference in the percentage is there. This just is a summary of the total budget then. We would be asking you to approve that total expenditure budget of 53,936,049. I threw in a couple extra slides. This one is different than what was, um, put on the website. We changed it today, because on Friday, um, council member Rachels and councilperson Jobe, we talked about, um, pulling apart and being, uh, more clear about the economic development funding we have in the budget. We have 70,000 in the budget. We have a $50,000 contract with Greater Fergus Falls. We included $20,000 in for other economic development services. Now that can be up to the council, how we do that in the future. There may be other, um, studies or services we would need as well. For example, if we need to work with Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, on something. So I'm glad they brought that up, that we show that separately, that you're not approving another $20,000 necessarily to Greater Fergus Falls. You could, you could have some amount of services to be charged for, but that's something we could determine. We don't have a contract for that right now. We have a contract for the 50. That's why I pulled this slide, slide out, wanted to just be clear about that. And then the Bigwood Events Center, kind of the same thing. I wanted to highlight this one a little bit. The last bullet point, we've talked about, we have this $15,000 in, um, marketing dollars. Um, I've sent out a bunch of information on the, um, history and operating of the Bigwood Center. So I wrote in this slide, just like I'm speaking to you tonight. Would the council want to, um, discuss that at a committee meeting in January, on how do you want to market the Bigwood Center? We could keep the 15,000 in the budget, and then you can determine, how do we do that and what organization do we do that with? We talked, you know, had a separate presentation about working with Leighton Media, we're doing the, the exchange out. This was put in for that second set of services, but we could come back if you would like in January and kind of talk about that at a committee meeting. If this will turn for me. Refuge Fund, that's the one enterprise funds that we did want to get the utility rates done at this time. We went through those back on November 27th, so the residential commercial going up to 3%, the disposal, 3.5%. Again, we're seeing that same increase on the side when we get rid of the garbage. Recycling going up a dollar. Then the landfill, if you deliver something out there, um, mixed municipal solid waste, the MSW, kind of your regular garbage, going from 2250 to 26. The bags out there from four to six dollars. And then the dumpsters and the roll-offs, those are those special pick services. You can see those changes we explained back in November. And then the demolition, um, rate charges, that's the large expansion we need to do out there. We went through that whole process that we have a lined cell. We were the first one, and we maybe are still the only one in Minnesota. Brian, is that true with the lined? We for sure were the first.
Yes.
Anyway, with that expansion, we need to, we need to go up. And a lot of this is contractors, when you do a job, bring it out there, or you have something special you need to bring out. Those dumpster charges, these, you know, that you call for a special pick, this is not on your monthly utility bill. This is for extra services over and above that happen. You may have a remodeling job or something. Okay, last slide for you, just next steps. We talked about this, um, continuing this meeting tonight, and we need to, um, get action to, or the, certify the levy to Otter Tail County by December 30th, so.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
And with that, we will continue the public meeting for the 2025 budget that was started at our previous council meeting on December 2nd. Anyone wishing to speak to the budget, welcome to do so at this time.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. My question is this. The budget could be approved. The budget could be not approved. If the budget is approved, and let's just say January 6th, a contingency came up, or a math error, could it be changed with the county six days in, 10 days in?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Once we've certified it to the county, the tax levy will change. Now, if the council needed to change the budget, you can certainly do that. We do that, like, let's say, well, something on the agenda tonight was the police department gets another $1,000 in, the council is, you know, makes a choice to increase the revenue and the expense. Now, the council has the authority to change the budget throughout the year, but once we've set that levy with Otter Tail County, then that is done with Otter Tail County.
It's inked.
Huh?
It's inked.
Yeah.
It's done. If it's not passed, what do they do, the county?
If we don't have a budget by the end of the year? Is that what your question is? Or a levy? I don't know, I'd have to find out. Yeah, I've...
And again, these are just technical questions.
And I don't know the answer to that. If we were to not pass a levy, um, yeah, we'd have to find out.
And last time we talked about our, your fund balances.
Yeah.
And I believe you're inside your, your fund balances. So, you know, if, if this next council comes up with some savings, uh, obviously this commission knows that I'm prepared to lower real estate taxes, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leighton. Anyone else wishing to speak to the 2025 budget? I will close the public meeting. Now, I'll leave to the council, I'd look for a resolution.
I'll have that resolution to close the budget, as Bill just changed it tonight.
Second. Second, time. Questions? Comments? Laura, Bill? Please go ahead. I think you're...
I'll go.
You'll have two resolutions, one for the levy, one for the budget.
Yep. First is, um, resolution adopting the 2025 levy.
Levy, yep.
In the amount of $8,550,000, as presented this evening.
I, I, yeah. Mike, I think Mike wanted to say something.
Yeah. No, I was just, I was gonna give a comment. I was gonna give a comment, uh, Scott Rachels and Laura Jobe and all the staff that worked on this, uh, commend their work. I know it's a lot of time, so, that's all it was.
Thanks.
Mine, mine was similar. I, um, when, when we started this process, we were obviously basically 10%. And, um, obviously, my learned friend to my left asked me what did I want, and I said, like, you need to get down to 3.5 to 4%, because that's, you know, my pay rise wasn't any more than that, so that's how much I can afford. And so I think they've done a good job in getting that down, so thanks, Scott, and thanks, Laura, and thanks for the staff that also kind of contributed to that.
Anthony, uh, yeah, well, his name came up quite a bit in the, in the tax levy. I says, he wants to get to 4%. And I said, it's not gonna happen. And of course, we kept on working at it. With a little luck, it came out really good. So, but I want to thank, working with, with Ben and Bill and Andrew, and then, of course, Laura, she's off tonight, but she's grandkids, I think it is, or something?
Yeah.
But, uh, it was a really good learning experience. It's hard, it's, when you start laying down that thick book and start looking at that thing and you think it's gonna be no problem cutting the budget, boy, you just, it's not, it's not easy at all, and it's, uh, I'm thankful I got to do it, got to understand it, so we'll look forward.
Thanks, Scott.
You missed, you missed one in Sandy.
Oh, I, you're right. Sandy's probably one of the, Bill is great, but Sandy's even cooler yet, great. She's really good.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Next, we would look for a resolution approving the 2025 budget in the amount of 53,936,049.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony.
I would second.
Thanks. Jim? Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Uh, next item is a developer's request for assignment and assumption of rights and obligation agreements for a TIF District 410 to Sunset Investments LLC. We'll call on Bill Sonmore.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Uh, in your packet, you have a request from, uh, the developers. We talked about this a little bit at the time of, um, setting the agenda. Um, so it's, it's a memo from the developers, I believe we have here tonight, okay, over here. So, um, I'll turn that over to, are you Sam?
Sam.
Okay. So we have Sam Jelleberg here, he's one of the developers with this. And, um, again, this is back before you, because they formed a new LLC, and that's what prompted that to come back, and they requested that that come back before you. So I'll turn it over to Sam and make your presentation.
Thanks, Bill. And, uh, Your Honor, City Council, thank you, everyone. Um, Sam Jelleberg, I represent the buyer for Sunset Investments LLC. I want to thank you all for the time to speak today. I hope that you all had a chance to read that memo. Uh, our buyer team worked really hard to put that together, to try and outline some of the, uh, questions and concerns from the previous meeting with our request. Um, with this, we used the, the channels available to us to set up, establish a new LLC, assigned the purchase agreement over to the LLC to make this request again. Um, I do want to highlight four of the main points from the memo, just to reiterate, and then welcome any kind of questions that you guys may have. Um, the TIF's transfer clause exists, um, was put in place among the developer's original development agreement with, alongside this TIF. Um, it called for the city council to approve the transfer of this TIF to any new buying entity, which is, which is us. Um, the purposes, we read it initially, was set within there to make sure that the new buyer had the, the skill set, the knowledge, the ability to manage and abide to the TIF guidelines within there. A big piece of that is this 20% AMI, uh, affordable housing guidelines that were set in there. Included with the packet, we put our bios of the three sponsors of the purchasing entity, which we hope helps illustrate that. We have plenty of experience with buying, owning, and operating real estate. Uh, second piece within there is that the property manager who's managed this building since it was constructed is going to stay in place. It's the same employees, uh, the same property manager is going to continue as is. So the on the, the boots-on-the-ground individuals still managing and, um, maintaining that, that same reporting that the, the city would receive. Um, I also highlighted the standard practice of this, this transfer of the TIF. Um, we had talks, because we wanted to make sure that we weren't running under any major assumptions, but again, we're surprised by the original denial of our first request. Um, again, requesting with the new entity here. We talked to developers, um, different municipalities, we talked to, uh, business owners, we talked to brokers, lawyers, and asked, um, have you guys ever seen a TIF be, be voted down, a transfer of a TIF? And we hadn't been able to find an example of that. So this, the, the original no vote was surprising to us there, and again, we wanted to make sure that we weren't running under a false assumption here. Also, one piece was talking about, there is concerns related to the current developer and the owner taking a, receiving a benefit from the TIF, right? Saying that there's a value to the TIF, them transferring it, are we paying them, uh, an extra amount for that TIF? And so within the memo, I stated that they are receiving a lump sum, and when we do our calculus to buy real estate or anything, we look at the cash flow and say, what's the value of that TIF? And in the memo, we stated, we calculated personally that that TIF's value was around 350,000, basically saying, we are going to pay an extra $350,000 for the property, and then in lieu of that, the developer is foregoing what we guess or estimate is going to be $550,000 of cash flow. You think about it with, you know, if you win the lottery, you get the lump sum or the cash flow payments, what we're doing is a net present value or a present value calculation there, and then in finance, we would say, the economic profit to the developer is zero. We're saying that they're foregoing $550,000 of cash flow in lieu for the value or that, that lump sum we're giving them upfront. So we wanted to clarify that point. And then the last piece we wanted to state, um, because we did notice it in the, the local paper, that they stated that this would remove the, the TIF agreement. We want to clarify that this is not a new TIF being created, this is a transfer of an existing TIF from the original developer to the new owner, Sunset Investments LLC. It's not in a further or greater obligation from the city, it's just a transfer of those payments, as well as the responsibilities of the new owner, maintaining, again, that affordable housing piece, the 20% of those units, those 105 units AMI, having to have at least 50% AMI. maintaining again, that affordable housing piece, the 20% of those units, those 105 units AMI, having to have at least 50% AMI. So, those are the major points I wanted to hit on and try and clarify. I know my partner, Ryan Koy, had communicated with, with many of you just to, so we could help understand, you know, what were some of the questions or concerns you had with this transfer. I hope that the memo, I know three pages is, is a lot to kind of write out this, but I hope that addressed some of those. And again, would, would welcome any questions, any, any comments here, but again, thank you for your time as we, as we again, go through this for a new proposal with a new entity.
Thank you, Sam. At this point, I guess we would look for a resolution authorizing the transfer of that TIF to the Sunset Investments LLC.
I will make that resolution, Your Honor.
Transfer in the assignment and assumptions.
A second.
Obligations. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Second. Scott? Questions? Comments?
Yes, Your Honor.
Please.
Sam, thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for taking a look at our city. Thanks for looking to invest in our city. I appreciate that very, very much. You'll, you'll know that I voted no on the last one, but I am a pro-business individual far and far. But when I look at housing, I look at it differently with it. So, I want to thank you for looking at our city, definitely. Rolf, I want to ask Rolf, do we have the right as a city to terminate that TIF for a new buyer?
To terminate the TIF?
To, to stop the TIF with a new buyer. Not with the old, not with the old individual, but with a new buyer, we have the right to vote on and not have the TIF go forward.
Well, the TIF is an agreement that's in place. I think the action tonight is whether you consent to the assignment, which is your right.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, yeah. You, I mean, it's, it's, you have the right to give that consent, or we withhold it.
Okay, good. So, one of the things that I'm, I'm looking at, Sam, as I, as we looked at this, what, what changed in your company to bring you back in front of us? What ownership change? What personnel change? What, what dynamics of the company changed to bring you back two weeks later?
So, what we had done is we had established a new LLC. So, we, we registered it with the state of Minnesota to establish new LLC, assign the purchase agreement over to the new LLC. Again, trying to use the channels that are available to us to present this again to you. So, that's where we went is basically took the original purchase agreement and said, here's Sunset Investments LLC, the, the entity that's requesting this today. And then I transferred or assigned that PSA over to-
Can you, so the ownership stayed the same?
The, the, the partnership makeup will be relatively the same, yes.
Can you explain to us so the, the public knows why you changed that name, changed that ownership?
So, in order to move this second request in there, basically to get this request in by, by year end, we had established the new entity, again, using the channels we had available to us to say, we're gonna assign this, present a, again, the three-page memo we provided, come in here today to kind of explain, here's the situation. Here's why we think this TIF is the, the transfer of the TIF to us is in the city's best interest. And so, with that channel, we basically, we established the new LLC for it.
Okay. Did anyone on this, did anybody in this council kind of guide you on that second attempt?
This would have been internally, we, we had speaks with our own general counsel, our own lawyer within there and said, hey, what's some of the avenues? We had, we had talked through it. And then within our guidance, we had reached out to the city to say, this is what we're, we want to establish within there. Is this allowed under, you know, under Fergus Falls, how the city council or how the city has established it?
So, you would say that probably council or staff advised you on the second request?
They confirmed our, they would have confirmed our, what our lawyer or our general counsel had advised us to look into.
Your Honor, I'm gonna, if you, if I may.
Yeah, please.
I think saying that we advise the developer would be a misstatement of the facts. I think that the question was posed to us, we asked legal counsel, Mary Apple, who is our bond counsel, if that's a new entity? And, and is a new entity a, a new request? And she confirmed as much, and that's the information we relayed to the developer.
Perfect.
And I told you that too.
Yeah, perfect, yeah. And I may have used the wrong word, advice. Perfect. With that, do you, are you aware last time that we talked about a, a business policy that we go by for TIF? Were you aware of that on the last vote when it was a no vote?
I heard it mentioned through the video, yes.
Okay. Have you seen that at this point, that business policy?
I have not.
Okay. So, I have that business policy in front of us and I didn't have this last time, so I was kind of going blind.
Yep.
And I apologize for that because I had asked Bill last time, I said, hey, you know, what, what do we go by? What do I determine TIF by? I've only been here three weeks with it. So, I, I've got it now. And what it looks like to me is it looks like this type of a entity for a consent for TIF is actually less desirable or less attainable now than it was last time when I voted no two weeks ago. So, some of the things that we look at here through our own business development, is this an attraction of a new business? No. Is this a highest, or is this a service that is needed? No. Is this a redevelopment of a, an existing property? No. Is this a job creation? No. And so, when I look at it, Sam, I, I sincerely want you to have that property. I really do. But from a taxpayer standpoint and representing the city, it's hard for me to get to what's right with this at this time. Can you enlighten me to that?
Yes.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna step in here for a second and just make the point that what you're reading from is the business subsidy policy. It's not a TIF agreement. We're not, we're not voting on a new TIF. So, so those, those, that has nothing to do with the assumption and the assignment of a, a TIF that's been in place for more than 10 years.
Yes.
So, I just want to make that clear. The other point I want to make clear is you have every right to be here. You followed the law. You've created a new entity. And I think that as you pointed out earlier, I was shocked as well. I talked to businesses in town. I talked to developers both in town and out of town. They have, also have never seen anything like that happened two weeks ago. So, I think you have every right to be surprised and say, boy, I would sure like to talk to that council. I want to do business in this community. I'm bringing my partnership in to do business in this community, and I would like a chance to talk to the council about a decision that shocked many people, including myself, and quite honestly, I, multiple people told me was the most anti-business decision that they'd ever seen a council take. So, you have every right to be here. Thanks for being here. And if there's any more questions for him, Mr. Mortensen, I just want to make sure that what you were saying is the business subsidy policy. It has nothing to do with the TIF agreement that is approved in 2014 that we're deciding on tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that very, very much. This business subsidy policy though, was presented to me by staff. And it was what was requested to say, where do we guide ourselves? And that's what this was in front of me. So, I appreciate, appreciate that on that end. Purge Lakes Management's done a great job for our city. I, I commend them for what they've done. I commend them for building that structure. I commend them for housing the individuals that they have. And so, I believe that they have been a great steward of that TIF money. And, and I have no issue with that continuing with them at this time. Where the issue comes with me is that this is a straight sale. It's a straight business sale. Same type of business sale that I do all the time. And so, where I have an issue with it is I usually do what's called, is it right or what is right test? And when I do that, when I look at the word right, when I look at TIF or I look at a business deal, I say, is it, is it gonna be retail? Is it gonna be industry? Is it gonna be growth? Is it gonna be tax-based? Is it gonna be hiring people? Sam, can you speak to that for me to, to get me on board here tonight?
No, I think, yeah, so, good questions there. So, I think when we look at the, the apologies, the business policy or the business subsidy policy within there, the decision framework with which you're working of, to me, sounds like something you would look to establishing a new TIF. Is, is how that would sound to me. When I look at this from the repercussions of saying, is this affecting retail or is this gonna affect industry or is this gonna affect business? On, when you look at a, a first primary impact, maybe not, but the secondary impact to that, I think that is what, which we said in the memo, is, is the concern that the city council should have of that. If, if not allowing for this transfer of the TIF, does that all of a sudden signal saying, hey, if you develop with us, if we do somehow, you come in and develop and we do grant you a TIF for, you know, you talked last meeting, retail or industry within here, well, in five years or six years, if they're looking to transfer that, that TIF, is the city council gonna have this similar situation? Regarding the, you know, going through the, does this job creation, how many jobs is this? This, this original development did provide 105 units to the city of Fergus Falls. To our knowledge, this is the newest apartment building in Fergus Falls, built in 2016. So, that means over eight years, that there has not been a new development. The newest development previous to that, I think, was 2010. So, this TIF did incentivize and bring 105 units, 21 of which are affordable housing to this. So, it did create growth and create housing for, say, the jobs that this town or city is trying to create. Again, when looking at it and saying, is the transfer of this TIF going to create new jobs or new industry? I don't think so. Is this transfer, is the denial of this transfer TIF, could that possibly hurt future growth? I do think so. Does the transfer of this TIF impact the city in any economic way? Are they outlaying additional capital, additional cash? No, they are not. And also, I do want to address the, a TIF is a, is a self-funding mechanism, right? The, I don't know what the original land tax charge on this was right now, but the city paid or the, sorry, Sunset Ridge paid 114,000 of real estate taxes last year. That, that additional growth in those real estate taxes is because this TIF created. Otherwise, that would probably be a vacant, vacant piece of land. So, there is some benefit to there, but to us, our sole focus is shifting on the transfer of the TIF rather than the, the job creation from creating a new TIF. I think, I think how we are looking at it and how I think it should be looked at is transferring this TIF and not having any additional economic outlay for the city, but rather moving it from one owner to the other and making sure that new owner is competent, know what they're doing, know what they're doing, and know that the property manager there is, is skilled and they have showed that, as Mr. Sumner said in the previous meeting, for the last six years. They've done a really good job reporting and maintaining those 50% AMI units.
Thanks, Your Honor.
And I just want to make another comment. I appreciate Mr. Mortensen, your comments, but I think it's very important that we recognize as well, there are different requirements for different types of TIF, housing versus business development. This is a housing TIF. Second thing I'd like to mention, we can talk about being business friendly all day long, but when we have opportunities to actually put our money where our mouth is, there's, there's a business that's looking to come in and potentially do business in the future. This is a message we're sending to businesses that want to do business in our community. There's 105 units there of housing that our businesses, manufacturing, they need those. Second, last thing I'll say is, in 2030, when this comes off, that's $90,000 in taxes that will go on the rolls for the city of Fergus Falls, that would not have been there had we not agreed with this, on this TIF agreement 10 years ago. Simply extending this TIF to allow this new entity to come into our community is, 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 is the right thing to do. And the last thing that I will say is, we can theorize all we want, but in the reality is, is if we're gonna have housing, which our businesses need, TIF is how they're doing it. They're doing it in Alexandria. They're doing it in Purim. They're doing it in Thief River Falls. They're doing it every multi-housing project unit that I'm aware of is, is using TIF. And so, this is not a new one. This is one that is, is extending the old agreement. And I just think it sends an incredibly wrong message to a community about how we're gonna treat people that we've entered into agreements with 10 years ago.
So, Your Honor, I appreciate that very, very much. I want this city and I want this council to know that I am as pro-business as anybody sitting here right now. I have over 50 or 60 companies that I'm supporting at this exact moment, will support all night, support through the week, and have for over 15 years in this community. So, it's not a business deal for me. This is more about a housing TIF deal for me. Sam, what I would love to see, and I mean this sincerely, if, I'd love to see you buy that. But if it doesn't work, what I'd love to see you do is come downtown here where we have a lot and another business or a building that's somewhat blighted. And I'd love to see you build an apartment building down there and put some commercial in the bottom of it. I'd love to see you put a Starbucks in one corner, another sub-shop in the other corner, some other retail. And I really mean that. I'm not, I'm not blowing you smoke. That would be a great addition to our city. I would have TIF written all over that for you because it's gonna be retail, it's gonna be growth, it's gonna be hiring of people, and it's gonna be a tax base that'll come to our city. So, that's the last thing I'll say. It was nothing other than that, and I'd love to see that, Sam, if you'd do it.
Your Honor. Oh, did you? Okay. Well, I was not able to be at the last meeting due to work obligation. I'm really sad that I wasn't. And I, I think it's ridiculous that you've had to come back before us, and I'm sorry about that. I, I mean, I thought your memo was very well-written, very well-laid out. I mean, your team obviously has the background and the experience to make this work. You know, people have treated TIF like a dirty word, you know, in the council over the years. And, and, you know, the point, the point that you, that you made and that the mayor made about, you know, it's not costing the city anything. It's money that we wouldn't be getting otherwise. And, and if, if we don't need all the housing we can get, that's sure news to me. So, I, I, I don't think it's very pro-business the way that you guys have been treated. And I, I implore the, the, the next council to not set this precedent precedent for people that want to come and develop in our community. Because, I mean, all they have to do is watch the last two council meetings and say, yeah, I think we'll go to Alexandria. I think we'll go to Morehead. It's ridiculous. So, thank you for being here. I appreciate what you're doing, and I will be supporting you.
Just to touch on-
Go ahead, Al.
What Councilmember Ruffer said, they've been going to Alexandria for years now. What I want to mention is, TIF did what it was supposed to do for that apartment building. It got it built. TIF is not there to sell an apartment building. TIF is there to keep it going. It will always be an apartment building. If you don't own it, somebody else will. This is $630,000 taxpayer money. So, yes, it does cost people money. Maybe not the city, but it costs all of you money. That's what I, I'm concerned about. I have no problem with using TIF for certain things, especially for business industry. I do have a problem for you to profit on it when you're selling and buying businesses with it. That I have an issue with. And I will not support this.
And again, I, I do believe that is a, a misunderstanding of, of how this TIF transfer is working. Is that, yes, we are paying them, again, we've laid out exactly what the value we have applied to this TIF. But if this TIF is transferred, does not go through, we will not acquire this property. It does not make economic feasibility for us. And the TIF will continue to exist. So, the, the former or current developer will continue to own it. The TIF is going to own. So, the impact to the city, again, if they transfer it or don't transfer it, economically is negligible. But then the impact of those repercussions of saying, you know what, if you develop within Fergus Falls, we create this TIF, we're not gonna let you. You're gonna be handcuffed to this property for the next 10 years. And again, when I, when I stress that, the lump sum that they are receiving, though you look at that as profit, the economic profit for that, they are foregoing $550,000 worth of cash flow in lieu of a $350,000 lump sum. So, to them, to us, we're saying, we're indifferent between the two of those. The developer is looking the exact same and saying, we're indifferent between the two of those. We are just looking to sell this property from somebody who's looking to buy and invest in the market. So, I do want to stress that point of that, the economic profit, this finance concept, when we look to buy and develop and, and acquire investments, we look at the economic profit to them as zero, and the same to us. The economic profit to this TIF, we're giving them a lump sum in lieu of cash flows that are coming straight back to us over time, over the next five years.
The other thing that I do, that goes through my mind is that it came back. You know, there must, it must be worth something to you just due to the fact that within, in two weeks, you formed a LLC to reintroduce this. So, that tells me there's other, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna do just fine. And if, and if you don't own it, the current owner will still own it.
Well, I think that during our due diligence underwriting, we outlay very, a great amount of capital when we're looking to buy these properties. That money becomes, right now, is close to being a sunk cost for us where all of a sudden, we're saying, you know, if we have a chance to push this through, because we like Fergus Falls, it's a city that's grown 50 basis points per year for us. It's a steady Eddie City. It's one that we want to invest in. And we've looked at that, done our due diligence, but that's not without a cost. And again, we want to buy this property. That's why we're pushing so hard to try and get this through and buy and invest in this property. And that's why we've come back to this. Because again, if this TIF is denied, I can guarantee you this trans, this acquisition, this, it will not occur because it's not economically feasible for us or the developer. And it's the same reason why the developer initially built it, built it with the TIF, is because it became economically feasible. Thank you.
Thanks.
Your Honor, we could go back and forth on this all night. I call the question. Let's forth.
I think we'd only be fair to-
That's, that's the motion.
It doesn't need a second.
I'll second too.
You don't need it.
Roll call, please. No. No.
Rachel.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution fails with four votes. Thank you for being here, Sam. Next, we'll move on to the Westridge Mall purchase agreement. There are three potential actions this evening, but first, I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, to kick off the discussions and bring us up to date.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, back in October, the city council authorized us to enter into a purchase agreement to purchase the Westridge Mall. And with that existing purchase agreement, we have a closing date that's forthcoming on December 31st, 2024. With this being the last- With this being the last meeting of the city council before that closing date, there, um, something needs to happen. I've laid out in the memo to you four different options that you have related to the, uh, purchase agreement that we're in. One would be canceling the purchase agreement based on the contingencies not being met, and I'll talk more about that in a second. Two would be extending the agreement to continue due diligence items. Three would be assigning the agreement to Ottertail County, which is contemplated within the purchase agreement. And then four would be, um, just going ahead and closing on that property on December 31st despite, uh, some of the pieces not being completely, um, vetted. One of the major contingencies within the purchase agreement, and one of the things that we spent considerable amount of time on, uh, back in October when we talked about this, is, uh, application related to the deed energy transition grant program, um, which we previously received funding from for the Checkers, uh, demolition and acquisition project. We were looking at, in partnership with Ottertail County, with Ottertail County being the lead applicant, a $1 million, uh, grant request through that fund. We learned, um, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, that we have received $650,000 from this program, not the full 1 million. Uh, the way the contingency in the purchase agreement was written was that, um, the purchase agreement could be canceled if the $1 million or an amount acceptable to the buyer was not received. With the knowledge that there was a $350,000 gap in what our request was, uh, city staff met with county staff to talk about how that could impact the project from their point of view, with them being the lead applicant on those grant dollars. And, uh, one of the things that county staff expressed to us was the ability and willingness to assume this agreement and run with this project from here, from the city of Fergus Falls. I think it goes without saying that the county has the expertise and the resources to complete a deal of this magnitude and the development if the city wishes to, uh, transfer it to them. In order to transfer this to the county, so if that's the action that's taken this evening, we also need subsequent action to allow the, um, county CDA to operate in Fergus Falls or for Fergus Falls to become a partner with the county CDA. We are currently the only city in the county, all cities, all other cities other than Fergus Falls and all townships in the county participate in that CDA. If the council elects to assign this agreement to the county, which is my recommendation this evening, they have a willingness to move forward with extending the purchase agreement, doing the due diligence items, um, spending the staff time and energy that it takes to fully vet this project. Uh, we also would need to approve a assignment and assumption agreement, which would contingent on a successful closing, write off the past due city utilities and certified utilities in the amount of $48,609.96. Um, one of the things I'll say while we're deliberating and debating what the right, uh, move to do is, is that, um, you know, keep in mind why we're having this discussion with the businesses that could potentially be impacted out there. The fact that for the first time in, in forever, we've had the seller, uh, sign a purchase agreement, we've made significant traction, and then with significant grant money identified and included in this project and a willing partner, um, the city has the ability to hand this thing off with minimal risk, minimal exposure, and, uh, has the ability to form a partnership with Ottertail County to see this major blighted property in our community, uh, addressed and, um, resolved for years to come. So with that, I think there's probably going to be a lot of questions, a lot of comments. Uh, just wanted to put those options before you. And, uh, depending on how the council proceeds this evening, there could be subsequent action to take as well.
Thanks, Andrew, and we'll look for a resolution to get this conversation started.
I would resolve that we assign the agreement to Ottertail County as contemplated within the agreement.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Second, resolution in a second. I'm sure there's plenty of discussion. I'll just kick off and reiterate, I think, a little bit what Andrew said, what we've been working on since, I think, May with this. And the first, uh, and foremost item is to save those four businesses out there. We've said that, there's four businesses that are in jeopardy. That's what drove these negotiations from the beginning. Um, that's the first thing. Save those four businesses, do everything we can to show those businesses that we want them in our community, and we're willing to, um, make that happen. And thanks to staff and to the county for, for, uh, for stepping up. Second of all, as Andrew mentioned, for at least 20 years, as long as I've been involved, we've been trying to get local ownership of that property. It's been a thorn in our side as a community for 20 years. We have an opportunity to do so tonight. Uh, we also have the opportunity at the same time to build a partnership with the county that every other city and township in the county, uh, benefits from. And just want to make it clear so people understand, as taxpayers of Ottertail County, we are paying taxes that are going to the CDA that benefit other communities. We need those same benefits coming to Fergus Falls. It makes sense. In the past, there's, may have been personality, I don't care what's gotten in the way. It makes sense to be involved in the CDA for Fergus Falls to benefit from that. So, uh, strongly believe that we need to take that action, uh, and thank the county for their participation in this project. And second, and lastly, do it utilizing state funds and, uh, protecting the taxpayers, getting that, uh, property into local hands. I hope getting into local private development as soon as possible. Uh, but I believe we can do that tonight. I did receive, and I'll make sure that the council, uh, I, I haven't had a chance because I have it on my phone, because I received an email from one of the owners, uh, of the theater, which is one of the four businesses that we're talking to. So I'm just going to read that portion of that letter, and I'll make sure to get it to you and feel distributed to the council because it is public record. But I did receive that on my phone just, um, since, uh, "Sorry, not able to attend the meeting this evening." This is from Tony Tillman, who's the vice president of CE, uh, CEC Theaters at the mall. And I won't read the entire letter, but I'm just going to read, he was here at the last time we discussed this item, um, before the council in October, but he says, "Without a change to the ownership of the mall in the very near future, it is our belief that we will likely end up closing our theater." I think that's what we've said. We're hearing it from, um, this individual. I think, again, I'll just reiterate the fact that we have the opportunity tonight to help save those businesses, do everything we can to make sure that they remain, uh, strong and in our community and get local ownership of the mall. So with that, I'll, uh, look for any questions, comments, um, discussion from the council. I know there's people in the audience. I'm sure they want to talk as well, so. Scott?
I just know that, uh, I've been in on these meetings trying to get this mall deal done, and we finally got, uh, all the entities that the gentleman owns the mall owes money to to, to come to agreement with us to forego that for the time being now until, uh, if something, if some profit comes on down, down the road, we can maybe get some money back. But with Ottertail Power, a big chunk of that, uh, that will, if we don't pass this, that will move forward and they'll, they'll, they'll turn electricity off, is what's going to happen. And that'll shut that place down, and we can't let that happen. And I think this is a good deal. The county's willing to step up and get this done, and, uh, I'm looking forward to voting for it.
Thanks, Scott.
I would just say that with, uh, with all the talk of business friendliness, that, um, doing everything we can to save those four businesses is obviously going to be the most business-friendly action that the council can take. So that kind of narrows down our choices a little bit, it seems like.
Thanks, Tom. I just, actually, I should read this next sentence. He says, "We certainly don't want to mean this in any way as, uh, as a threat, but it's just an economic reality, um, that they face with the current ownership." So I just want to make sure that that doesn't come across. I want to read his second sentence there, too.
I, I think nobody would disagree that it's blighted. Um, and, and yes, we want to do everything we can to save the businesses, but I think, you know, my concerns are we don't really have a plan post-ownership. Um, and, uh, I think that's kind of, you know, I, I read the application that got put in, and it basically just says, well, obviously, we're going to take the building, we're going to demolish it. Um, this, you know, just so everybody's aware, this is like a $2 million project. Um, Fergus Falls represents about 24% of the county. So, you know, out of the 2 million, obviously, we've got 650 as a grant. Um, that leaves kind of roughly, you know, 1.3 million. You know, the share of Fergus Falls population of that would be about $300,000. Um, you know, there's, there's some guidance in there that says they're going to apply for a grant for demo. Um, but I mean, we've not been that successful in getting full amounts of grant money. And, um, you know, do we know why we only received 2/3 of the grant? Um, nowhere in the grant application do we mention, you know, the, the reason that these businesses are in the position they're in is because of the fire suppression system. It's, uh, and there's nowhere in there that addresses how we're going to separate that, that fire suppression system out, which is the way that the businesses will survive. At this point in time, we only have, you know, Andrew's word and a conversation between the county and the city that they will take this on board, and the county doesn't meet until tomorrow. So I, I think, you know, for us to commit to purchase that property tonight without the commitment from the county would be unwise. I think they have to say that they are prepared to take this with the lesser amount of, of the money. I think we also have to look at, you know, where is that balance of funding coming from? Um, I would ask the question, why can't we use the 650 to separate out the fire system? Um, that would solve the issue. And I mean, I know they'll come back and say, obviously, well, that wasn't the original intent of the grant application, but, you know, they, they got it, we got it awarded. We can, we should be able to go back and, and ask that. Um, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, it's, it's kind of irresponsible of all of us, including the county, that we're going to commit to $2 million without a plan. Uh, I think if there was a plan of where we're going to go with this, I, I would be, you know, more in favor of it, but it's, we're buying it, and we don't know what we're going to do with it. And we, we need to know that. And at the end of the day, we, you know, quite honestly, we are bailing out poor business management. If any of us in this room didn't, didn't separate ourselves, I mean, that would be like, you know, me kind of having my electric coming from somebody else at my house and not, not kind of doing that or having the, my water. I think that's kind of bad. And, you know, I had a lot of conversations over the weekend, and, you know, one of those gentlemen, you know, wrote a, a letter which kind of got circulated to the council that questioned, like, why are we doing this for, you know, the market cap of, uh, Harbor Freight is over $8 billion. Um, Dollar Tree was like, something like about $7.5 billion. Now, Dunham's had revenue of $450,000 last year. And I think, you know, I, I would like to ask that we look to request an extension, um, so that we can learn, so, get, get better clarity. I think, I'm not against doing this in the, in one sense, but I think we, we need to know as well, what exactly does it mean, you know, I mean, to be, to link to the county? I think it seems bad that if we're paying for a service at the county and we're treated that badly by the county, that they won't do anything in Fergus Falls? It seems, you know, it seems bizarre, and I don't think that's necessarily the case. But I think I would like to have a presentation from the county as to exactly what does it mean to enter into this relationship with them, which we, we haven't had. It's all anecdotal, and it's all hearsay, and I think it would be nice for the county to come and say exactly what does this mean, um, so that, so that everybody's aware of what we're signing up for.
Thanks, Anthony. I think, do you want to talk to a couple of those points?
Thank you, Your Honor. Congressman Hicks, you asked a lot of questions there, so I'll do my best to, uh, try to address all of them, and if I miss them, I apologize. First of all, Nick Leonard is in the audience, and, and I think it would be fair to ask him questions related to the CDA or, or the county's operation. Um, and I think he's open to that, not to put him on the spot. But a couple of the, the points that you made, I'm not suggesting, I don't think anybody's suggesting we buy this tonight without these answers. What we're suggesting is we can, uh, transfer this or assign this to the county. The first thing the county's going to have to do is get an extension to this agreement and continue due diligence. There's a lot of, uh, moving pieces to that. The conversations I have had with county staff is that there may be a pivot to that grant agreement or grant application, keeping in mind that the county was the lead applicant on that. So they're not out of bounds by, uh, thinking how they may change that application or change the use of those funds. But some of the things that we talked about that is on their mind is doing those separations with the reduced amount and then seeing if there's an avenue other than demolition. Or, uh, one of the things that I heard come up in a couple of different meetings was that they would like to do some sort of planning effort, uh, as part of those grant funds as part of, uh, acquiring this property to answer that question as to what's going to happen with it. But I think the goal is and continues to be to get this thing in local ownership, stabilize, address those concerns that we, that's the first time hearing that of the theater, but that's consistent with conversations I've had. Um, addressing some of those things while having local control over it. Um, and again, I think the county's in the best position to do that because the city council and the city staff and everybody here can hand it off, trust that they're going to work through the due diligence matters. Um, if it's a good deal, they can close on it. If it's not, they can cancel it at that point in time, and it doesn't put the city at any future, um, risk. And frankly, I think based on some of the comments we heard tonight with the budget, there's probably not an appetite to spend additional funds. And, and with the, um, less-than-full grant award, there's probably going to be a point in time where there's going to have to be money that's infused into this project. So, um, I hope that answered some of your questions, but I, I don't think that, um, there's anything more that we're going to learn at this point in time that the county isn't capable of running with if we assign this and they continue on their due diligence. I don't think the county's intent, uh, and Nick can speak to this, or Lee, is to close on this property at their board meeting tomorrow and, and leave everything untouched and unanswered. So, um-
Thanks, Andy.
Maybe Nick can fill in the CDA stuff.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. I just, I don't know, if, if, Nick, if you had anything you wanted to add on the CDA, you could. I just would say too, I would just remind people that there's been two public auctions in, of this property in the last 18 months. Uh, there has been private interest, um, both instances, the hangup was negotiating with the current owner. So there is interest from the private sector. I think this gives us an opportunity to get this into local control so we can get it back into the private sector, whether that is demolition as was originally planned in the, uh, grant agreement or the grant application, or whether it's pivoting and stabilizing and getting it as quickly as possible into the, uh, into the private sector. Those decisions can be made, of course, by the county. But this allows us to execute this purchase agreement and once and for all get that mall property back into local ownership. Mr. Mortensen?
Your Honor, I appreciate that, and, uh, I, I couldn't agree with you more that this has to be, something has to be done in this, this, uh, avenue with this. And so I, if, if something goes today where you don't think I'm business-friendly, that's absolutely not the case. But one of the things that, I know we have a resolution on the floor. And one of the things that I look at, uh, whenever I do a business deal, no matter if it's a billboard, land acquisition, all of that, whether I'm turning over to the county or not, which I don't do, I, I want to know, I want to know what I've got here. I want to know what my exposure is here. I want to know when I go back to the taxpayers of this city, when they say, "Hey, what's the county going to do with it? Why did you give it to the county?" And I say, "I don't know." That's difficult for me to go back there and do with them. It really is. I think one of the things that we could really do for the community is have a 120-day extension of this agreement. Section 21.5 of the contract allows an extension of this agreement. And then what I would say is what would be great is to take the council, the new mayor, administration, bring in the county, bring in all of these, and let's have some work sessions so we can work this out. Because one of the things I can't do tonight for the city is make a mistake. I don't want to make a mistake, because if something goes down with the resolution tonight and it fails and it goes away, that's a mistake in my mind. I feel that we have to do somewhat of an extension so we can get together and discuss this a little bit more at the county so I can go back to my constituents so they're, they feel good. I'm concerned that if we take a, a vote, that that, this thing may go away. I don't want that. I don't want that. I want more discussion, more clarity, so I can determine if this is the right thing to do.
Thanks, Mr. Mortensen. Any other? I, I also agree. I think that an extension would be nice just to give us as a council and county commissioners and who's ever involved, we're going to go meet out there. We're going to go walk that place together. I think that's what we need to do. None of that's been done. And I think in order for us to make a good, a good decision, we have to know these options and what's going on. Thanks, Al. Thanks, Al. I would just make note that, um, you know, this, we have been working on this. We've had multiple, um, meetings on this. We've presented this multiple times. This council, which has been elected, we have a purchase agreement. Um, and I think that we have an opportunity tonight to execute that purchase agreement. We do not know if the seller would be willing to extend that. Uh, and quite honestly, it doesn't matter. We have the opportunity to actually act tonight to get this property, to show those businesses were willing. Do everything we can to make sure that they remain viable in this community and we have the opportunity to do that tonight. I don't think we need to kick the can down the road. I think the county's been a willing partner. They've obviously indicated that's their intention. Scott?
We were received, we, all of us on the council, received a copy of a letter written by Lonnie Ballwick that I'd like to read, because I think it really addresses this well and he says things in a way better than I can. Dear members of the Fergus Falls City Council, I regret that I am unable to attend the upcoming meeting regarding the proposed purchase of the Westridge Mall, but I want to express my strong support for this initiative and highlight why this is a critical opportunity for Fergus Falls. The decline of the Westridge Mall has had a visible impact on our community. Without action, we risk further economic losses, a reduction in accessible shopping and service options, and a decline in property values. The city's intervention is not just a rescue effort, but an investment in the future stability and prosperity of our local economy. One critical aspect of this effort that must be underscored is the grant funding being pursued to support this project. While some may argue that this involves taxpayer dollars, it is vital to recognize that these funds have already been appropriated at the state level. If we do not secure them for Fergus Falls, they will simply be allocated to another community. By bringing these dollars here, we ensure that they serve our local businesses, residents, and economy rather than benefiting another city. This is a rare opportunity to leverage external resources to create local solutions. The purchase of the mall also opens the door for a strategic development, redevelopment, excuse me, redevelopment plan that can attract new businesses, strengthen existing ones, and establish a modern commercial hub that meets the needs of our residents. By working with Otter Tail County's Community Development Authority, the city can create a public-private partnership that will drive long-term economic growth while safeguarding the operations of current tenants Dunham's, Dollar Tree, Westridge Theater, and Harbor Freight. While I understand that there are differing opinions on this matter, I urge all council members to focus on the potential impact of this decision will have on the future of Fergus Falls. It is not just about saving the mall, it is about seizing an opportunity to shape our city's future and ensuring that resources earmarked for economic development are directed to where they are most needed, here in Fergus Falls. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this decision. Although I cannot attend the meeting, I want you to know that I support this effort wholeheartedly and believe it will bring lasting benefits to our community. Sincerely, Lonnie Ballwick, Ward II resident. And I wholeheartedly agree with Lonnie on this and I believe that voting for this is the only responsible thing that we can do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I'd like to, uh, anyone in the audience wishing to, yeah, please, I know there's some people that are here tonight.
Steve from City Salon. Steve Shonick, uh, mayor, councilman. Just one item, I guess, for clarity to, uh, Councilman Hicks' questions. Um, so to be clear, Otter Tail Power, um, we did have a past due, we do have a past due with the mall due to the situation here. And in the last couple of months, uh, the existing businesses have stepped up and they're taking responsibility for that common area going forward. So that's good. Um, it also shows that they're committed to staying. I think the theater, I think that's where you get that email from. I know they've been on the fence for quite a while just from a profitability perspective and we don't want anything to tip them, um, over. We've extended our receivable as long as we did because we wanted to make sure these businesses stay here and I hate to see anything delay to keep that from happening. If we don't do anything, we're still in the same situation. There's no Plan B you're asking for. I, I agree that there should be a Plan B, but do we hold it up for a Plan B? I would say no, that's your decisions. Um, the best thing we can do is get this out of the hands of the current owner, get it over to the city and the county in this case, and work on it and, and, and do some development. I mean, that's what we're here for, to make this happen. And so, um, I think that's the best, the best, uh, way to go. Would we want it to be perfect? Yep. But can you imagine losing $650,000? I don't think we're guaranteed that. And I think you go back and try to extend that type of thing, it's money lost. So, anyway, some clarity and just additional thoughts on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Jeff Ackerson, uh, with Vector Windows. Again, just wanna say thank you to the council and to the mayor and everyone. Again, this is not an easy decision for you guys. It's not a perfect solution. You don't have it, but that's why you guys get paid the big bucks to sit in the seat and make that decision. But, um, but again, you guys just approved a budget that again, gives dollars to Greater Fergus Falls or Greater, yeah, Greater Fergus Falls, that's the name, right? Um, to basically be able to help with economic development. If you talk to any economic developer out there, it's a lot easier to keep a business in a community than it is to go and find a new one. So here you have an opportunity to say, how do we save four businesses in this community versus losing four and then having to go out and try to find four, six, eight more to be able to come back into this community? So, again, these four businesses haven't done anything wrong. Commissioner Hicks, I appreciate, they, they leased a building from an owner that they thought would pay the bills. Uh, if I was leasing a part of a building, we lease buildings in this community, I would never have assumed I had to separate my electric power from the, the company that I'm leasing from. So again, you could say that you may have and you'd be a smarter man than I am, but, um, that would not be the first thing I would look at. I would assume that the electric bill's being paid, I'm leasing, I'm paying my triple net, whatever it is on that building. These four businesses have paid everything that they've deserved to pay. If this pushes off, if we lose this $650,000, you guys will be the next council where they'll say, what happened when we lost Target, when we lost Kmart, when we lost, uh, Dunham's, when we lost Dollar Tree, when we lost everywhere else? And so this is not a perfect solution. It's not gonna give you all the Plan Bs. But again, uh, Commissioner Mortensen, when you say you don't like making mistakes, I would tell you, if you don't make a mistake, you're never gonna make a decision. Um, all of us in business have made mistakes. You guys have to make decisions and you will make wrong decisions, but do it for the right reason and you can come back and you can change that decision down the road, you can make others. A bigger mistake is to not make a decision and lose four businesses. So that's all I've got to say and again, I just, I think again, you guys talk a lot. This is, actions speak louder than words. You've got four businesses in this community that are paying their taxes and again, if we don't support them as a business owner, it would, I would not, I hate to say this, I've done acquisitions in other communities, I've moved companies into other communities. The first thing you do is look at the paper, you look at the council minutes, you look at what's happening in there and you make decisions on where you locate businesses based on actions, not words. And so here's your opportunity to show future business owners that you guys are investing in a economic development group here in Fergus Falls to attract them. Please don't put impediments in their ways as they're trying to be business to this community. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Go ahead. Anyone else before we call for the vote?
I appreciate your words. Mayor says this thing started in May. Didn't come to the council until late November. I think the council's using-
That's not actually accurate.
Okay, shoot at me, but that's fine. I missed a date one way or the other. You're using-
It's pretty significant.
We're using the four businesses as Trojan horses. They have their own electricity. Is that true? Nobody knows. How can we fix the fire suppression? We have to demo the building or take the building or sell the building? That can be fixed. Mr. Rachels, you ask or indicated of the five or six unsecured creditors, who's truly giving it up?
I believe they've all signed a, a waiver of they're not gonna do anything with it. I, I can ask, Mr.-
There's assumption agreements that have been drafted.
Yeah.
It's not a write-off.
Andrew can address that.
It's not a write-off.
No, I didn't say that.
I, I'm, I'm getting clarification, because we've got letters from other business interests. As a council-elect, I'm getting letters from citizens, probably not appropriate to read at a council meeting, that are extremely disappointed in this council considering buying I don't believe those businesses will sell. Number two, I don't think, has anybody contacted Harbor Freight? I understand there's a lawsuit. No one's proven it to me, but I understand there's a lawsuit. Why are you gonna step in the middle of that? We talk about, uh, making mistakes. I'm not gonna go to court because I stepped on someone's toes in a, in a legal battle. Nobody knows these things.
Can I make one comment on that, Mark?
Yeah, you can.
Is, is the way I've drafted these-
The way I've drafted this assignment, it's also called a novation agreement. And the novation agreement assures the fine citizens of Fergus Falls that you are not at risk. The county is stepping into our shoes. The citizens of Fergus Falls are not put at risk over this matter because of the novation. The county is the one that's taking on the risk and if there is risk, then there is risk county-wide, but it's not the citizens of Fergus Falls taking on and assuming the risk.
Thank you. And Andrew and I have gone around this, you know, come on, full transparency. Citizens don't know what's going on here.
Your Honor. Mark, I answered to your face last Wednesday in front of Councilmember Mortensen and Council-Elect Kildee. The questions that you're posing right now, that we have talked to Harbor Freight, we've talked to the owner of those buildings, and also that what you heard about a lawsuit is not accurate. I said those things to your face last Wednesday. So I'm not sure what you're-
Do the citizens know that they have their own electricity?
I said that at the meeting on October 21st.
So it's just the fire suppression that we're worried about?
Which is what I said on October 21st.
Are there other solutions for that? I don't know. If I were sitting on the council tonight, regardless of what the legal agreement said and I don't know what's going on, I would have difficulty, uh, voting in favor of this. Even abstaining would be difficult. I don't know what the, the total picture is. There's a lot to be said. I, I favor the 120 days re, uh, revisiting this.
Thanks, Mr. Mortensen.
Your Honor, I think that the total picture is it's going to the county. It's not, the city council will not be responsible once we turn it over to the county, period. Rolf just explained that to us. And that makes me feel, I didn't know, I didn't, I forgot it was in there. And that makes me feel a lot better and, uh, but we need to save these four businesses. I don't, we're all dancing around trying to, and tonight, all we'll do is assign this, we'll accept this agreement and the county, if they fall back out of it, we can also back out, right? There's that, that's around, Andrew. If the county says no, we, we're all, we're all too.
Then the agreement is no, if the county.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna, I have a couple of thoughts. If you're gonna pass a resolution tonight, the one that's on the floor assigning this, you know, you may wanna add a contingency that if the county doesn't accept it tomorrow, um, then we, the staff has the ability to cancel the purchase agreement. And I think the same would be said if, if the action tonight is to extend the purchase agreement, I would also ask for you to give me the authority to cancel the agreement in the event the seller doesn't agree to it. Seller could say, no, I'm not extending this and we have a purchaser, or a closing date of 12:31.
So, may I add just one other thing too, is the purchase agreement does contemplate and require transfer of this purchase agreement to the county. So that is, you know, in the contract.
So, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Tom?
Uh, just, yeah, one, one final thing, you know, this narrative of, of Fergus Falls is dying, that if you, um, you know, if you waste your time on social media, you're gonna see that over and over again and, 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 I mean, let the record show that, that, you know, the council members that vote against this, I think that whoever says Fergus Falls is dying, they need to go to those council members and ask, why did they vote against keeping these businesses in town? Um, it's, we have an opportunity ahead of us, you know, to, to do what we wish we could have done with Target or wish we could have done with Sunmart, wish we could have done with Hurburgers. We have that chance now and if we're gonna give that up, make note of who voted against it.
Thanks, Tom. Lisa?
Uh, Lisa Workman, President of the Fergus Falls Chamber. We have over 350 businesses and nonprofits who make investments in the chamber because we stand behind them and support them. We wanna be a business-friendly community. This is your opportunity to support those four businesses that may decide to go somewhere else. And that has a rippling effect because if you choose to not support those businesses, who wants to come here next? It makes that challenge of economic development even harder. We are gonna do everything that we can to support our members and the businesses in our community and I would hope that our council would do the same. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. So we have a, uh, resident-
Hi there, my name's Charlie Smith. Uh, I'm the one who wrote the letter, uh, or one of the letters that you guys have received. Um, and I'm here to present apparently an unpopular opinion, but, um, to me, it feels like everybody thinks it's one or the other here. It's either shut down those four businesses or buy the mall so that they can continue. I would love to try and explore some other avenues. Um, I think we could come up with a better solution if we're willing to work with these businesses to get them some fire suppression so that they're no longer reliant on the mall owner anymore. It's already been to auction twice and nobody's bought it. It's only gonna get cheaper if it goes into foreclosure and then we can secure it for a lower cost to the taxpayers. And I think that would be a wiser route. Certainly don't wanna see these businesses leave Fergus Falls. So let's get them fire suppression so that they're no longer reliant on the mall and then he's got nothing here. And then he will be more inclined to get rid of the property. Um, just a reminder that sometimes when we're looking at budgets of $53 million, that maybe $2 million can feel small, but most of us are operating on more like $53,000 for a budget. So when we see somebody not paying $38,000 worth of taxes or $200,000 worth of utilities, um, that's really frustrating because we're all shouldering the load that he is not helping out with, that he has taken away from the taxpayers. And yes, the county taking it, um, might take it off of Fergus Falls, but in my opinion, taxpayer dollars are taxpayer dollars and whether it's county dollars, state dollars, federal, federal dollars, they're all still coming out of our pockets and it would be nice not to see them go into the pockets of someone who has done such a disservice to Fergus Falls for such a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Did you?
Mike Sugaray, 14th House. Question, where's the 350,000 gonna come from out of, out of the million dollars?
Yeah, Your Honor, thank you for the question. That would be up for the county to determine.
They'd have to come up with that.
Correct.
Okay, what about the $300,000 debt that we're all paying here now? I mean, we've all paid this debt already.
What are you, what are you referring to?
Well, the Otter Tail Power, just like the young gentleman said, the taxes for, for the county, the city, the $48,000 for the city and the 192,000 for Otter Tail Power, we've all paid that. The other question I got is since we've got a council member that is possibly related to somebody that works in the law office, is that council member allowed to vote on this? Thank you.
I don't know if that question is to me, Your Honor, but, you know, the council members have to determine their own conflicts of interest and typically that would be if they have a financial gain from a, from an action of the council and in this case, I'd assume that isn't the case.
Yeah, he's talking about me. Uh, my father retired from Pemberton. Um, and I, he, he has no control over my decisions, so, but I appreciate you bringing it up.
All right. Any, Mr. Mortensen, the-
Your Honor, I wanna, I just wanna talk very straight with this here. We have a resolution on the floor. Andrew, can you, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, can you give us an amount of what that electricity in that common area is that they're, what the cost of that is monthly for those three, four businesses, do you know?
Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen, I don't know exactly. I, I've heard in the past an estimate on a monthly basis from Otter Tail and I'm, it's not on the tip of my tongue and I don't wanna throw that out there. If Otter Tail can speak to it, they-
Yeah. Um, thanks for the question. I don't remember the, the specifics. I think at its peak, it's 4,000 a month for that common area. I wanna be clear, because a couple of things have been said, I don't think they're that clear. The existing business, the ancillary businesses have stepped up and are paying that bill right now. That's a short-term solution. They've also agreed, and I can't speak for them, but I understand is they've stepped up and they've agreed to cordon things off. So do the fire suppression, do different things, so they can function without the mall. Again, I'm not speaking on their behalf, but that's my understanding. So, you know, we wouldn't change things going forward. And by the way, the number that's outstanding, that will be a write-off. I mean, we don't, we're not set up to get anything from that. We will try to collect from him. We're not going to give up those rights. But I see this as purely an economic development issue with $650,000 of grant money, and I'm not fully understanding the liability of the Plan B. Again, doesn't exist now. He's not doing anything but standing in the way. So I hope that answers the question on the-
Well, it did. I think you said up to four grand.
Per month.
Per month on that end.
That's a high-
But the one thing that was interesting that you said, and I want to make sure that I heard it right, was that those businesses are prepared to cordon off that fire support, cordon off their areas and break that fire support down. Was that correct?
Our understanding is they're working towards that, yes, and they need to, no matter what happens with this.
Yeah.
So that's what we've put back in the show. I think there's been some inference that maybe they're not being responsible, or why are we helping out Harbor Freight that's a large conglomerate? We're helping them to keep them in the town, and they are stepping up and doing what they can to, to get out of an agreement with a owner that has basically failed them.
Yeah, so, yeah. I appreciate that information, I really do. I appreciate that a lot. I want to come back, thanks, Steve. I want to come back to just really talk practically here with this. So we know we have up to a $4,000 common area fee that we're looking at with this. Your Honor, I do not want this to go down tonight for our citizens with not passing a resolution. I do not want that to happen. I don't want us to end on that note. I want us to see if we could have the two that made the resolution retract them, and I would like to see if we could go for an extension of that purchase agreement, so we can sit down and really hammer this out with the county, because the number-one thing here is the fire suppression. And if we can assist these businesses and get this mall over the course of the next 120 days and take care of that fire suppression, that's going to be a win. That's going to be a win, because what I worry about from those businesses' standpoint is the county takes it over, which is probably more than great, but I don't know tonight. But what I worry about is there going to be another owner that's after that, after the county, that has that mall. And what if we're back in this situation again, where they won't do anything with the fire suppression? These businesses are in the same spot they're in now. Then we have no money to help them at all. So what I would like to do, I do not want this to die with a resolution tonight, because it's not good for our community, but we need a little more time to work through this, so we can do exactly what we need to do for that fire suppression and exactly get this over to the county if we're going to do it that way. And I would make one more point. I make one more point, that I know that's a resolution on the floor, but I'm just kind of talking. I would not be opposed, and in fact, I would endorse it for this city, for us to pay that utility bill up to that $4,000 for that common area. And what that does to these individuals, it's off the table that there's any expense on their end at all. If we took care of that during the course of our 120 days of looking at this, they would be set. They'd be set. They're not, they wouldn't do anything to make them go away. They wouldn't leave, they wouldn't have added electric costs. We would, because we extended that agreement. So that's what I'd look at. I know a resolution's on the floor.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Just like to respond that we have a resolution, although we have an opportunity to get that, use that $650,000 of state money, work with the county over the next 120 days, work with them over the next 180 days. We can pass that resolution tonight, we can get that mall into local ownership. There is no reason that we need to kick this can down the road any longer. We've been working on this for 20 years. The opportunity's in front of us. We can talk about being business-friendly all we want. We have the opportunity to do it tonight, to take the action and to get that property into local hands and show those businesses, we're going to do everything. And we can spend 120 days, we can spend 100, we can spend as much time as we need to work out all the details. We cannot let the perfect be the enemy, the good tonight. We have a good opportunity to save those businesses, to get local ownership, and I just can't imagine why we would kick that can down the road. So we have the opportunity. So we can say that we don't want to vote that down tonight, but we have the, we have the opportunity to show that with our votes tonight. So that's, that's the resolution on the floor. We're going to call for the question here shortly, but I think Mr. Rognes had a point he wants to make.
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople, the subject matter of course tonight kind of reminds me of trying to shake hands with an octopus. There are so many things on the table here, and the thing that I really would like to emphasize is, first of all, we have the opportunity to take Marty Graff out of the picture. And we don't know what he'll do if we rescind his signature. He has a signature on a document already, so we have, we know, we know we got that part done. And that's a part that we've really struggled with as a community to try to do business with him. He'll say he'll do things, and we can't get him to put his name to it. So we have that tonight. Not only that, but we're concerned about the citizens of Fergus Falls, and that is, they don't have to put the money up to clear off the title and get Marty off the ownership of that. We have the money, and it's coming from the state, and we earned that money because we've been a participant of the tax programs of our state. So we, we are calling in a chip on our own investment. And then the other thing is, and there's so many other things here, that I would like to say tonight as my own person, is when we became aware that we could move with Marty, I became aware of it from a third party, that's when we went to our people at the county, and we spoke about this and how we could help the city. So the idea is, the city, we came to the city from the county. The county came and said, how can we do this to get this done? And yes, I spoke to that, and I know that if we don't do something with that mall out there, even if we don't tear it down, I'd say, what is the alternative that we have in mind if we want to say no? And be careful what we say no to, we've got to be careful what we say yes to. So I'd just say, okay, if we want to say no, what is our plan for the answer no? Because that mall is block and cinder standing out there, and yes, we have the complications of fire suppression, electricity, we've got common areas, we've got a parking lot out there that needs some light on it for public safety. There's a lot of elements in there, but I would just like to focus on the fact that we get to get the title off the record under Marty's name, and that is absolutely monumental. Yes, we don't have a plan beyond that, but we've got a room full of people that can figure out a plan. And there's citizens in the community that are pro business, and they'll take and step up on that as well. But we get to change the title, and we get to do it with money that the city doesn't have to put up with. And yes, the county is willing to partner with you on that. And we don't know how much longer we get that money from the state under deed. They, they don't put it out there and then forever leave it hanging for us to make a decision, and I think you need to get that answer before you say no as well.
Thanks, Lee.
Is there any questions that I could answer for anybody?
I think we-
No?
You wouldn't want to answer them.
Mr. Mortensen? Anybody got a question? I'm, I'll send it off to my-
Mr. Rognes?
Yes?
If it's such a good deal at 419, buy it.
I've been accused of that already.
I'm not accusing him, I'm asking.
Well, I don't have the money, the state has the money. You seem to understand that this is money that we get as a grant, and it's $650,000.
But the sale is 419?
Your Honor, and the county's willing to pay that. All you have to do is assign it.
Mr. Rognes?
I don't have the option for you to buy it, because I don't have the 419 to give to Mr. Graff.
It's also very irrelevant.
But the county is-
We have dialogues with the audience, and I shouldn't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Rognes. And, and just to make it clear, but the county is willing to spend that $419,000, and they're going to use state grant funding to do it, and we have the opportunity to make that partnership tonight, execute that purchase agreement, and finally, once and for all, get this into local hands and save those four businesses. So we have a-
Regarding my motion, I made a motion to save those businesses, and we've had more than enough time to discuss this issue. We've been discussing this for quite some time now. We have a solution, it's on the table. If you want to see the resolution passed, vote yes.
With that, I'm going to call for the roll. Roll call. No. No.
Rachel?
Yes.
No.
Fish?
Yes.
Yes. A resolution fails for a lack of five votes. Guess at this point it's probably not necessary to go to the county CDA.
No, Your Honor, but it is necessary to either cancel the purchase agreement or to extend the purchase agreement.
I would offer a resolution to extend the purchase agreement by 120 days and authorize staff to cancel agreement if the seller is unwilling to do so.
I'd second that.
Or if the county is unwilling to do so, too.
Yep, you could add that, too.
Does a resolution second?
I'll second it.
I just, I think that, I don't know, that's-
It's over. You don't have the floor right now.
I mean, yeah, we had the solution, and now, you know, now the council members that voted for the solution feel pressured to not vote against extending this purchase agreement, and that's a pretty shady position to put us in. And it's, I think it's, unfortunately, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of that kind of thing. It's, it's really too bad. Again, let the record show, we had a solution on the table, and it was voted against. Make note of who voted no, and that's, get used to it. And this is, yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Really sad.
Thanks, Tom. If we have a resolution on the floor, is a second? Roll call, please. Yes. Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No. A resolution is approved. I guess we'll move on to the presentation of claims tonight. We have claims in the amount of $1,971,281.48. If there's any questions, we will-
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.